I'd like to call the Marvin Planning Board meeting to order for August 17th, 2021 at 6:30. We have a quorum. Has everyone had a chance to read the agenda?
Yes.
All right, could I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Yes, I need a second.
Michael seconds?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm assuming Kent, Kent is speaking, but we cannot actually hear him.
You guys hear me?
Now we can.
Yeah, now we can.
Yep, aye.
Thank you. All right. Approved, moving on. Adoption of the minutes for 7/20/21, our last meeting. I think it was our last meeting. It feels like it, yeah. Everyone had a chance to read it and it's so, are there any changes, comments, questions?
No changes heard, no questions.
All right. Someone like to move to approve?
I move to approve.
You're gonna be like, yeah. It's like the home team today. Do you have a good mind? Okay, Michael, Michael. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John has a caution symbol. Kent?
Aye.
There's a.
Perfect, there's Josh, okay.
We're missing Ken, aren't we? Ken Marino.
No, I saw him before, is there page two?
No.
He was on before.
He must've dropped off.
No, he started with us, but can't.
He might get kicked off. Okay, he'll, he'll go back.
I'll let him know he's not on.
All righty. I don't believe we have anyone signed up for public comment, but anyone, any guests online have a public comment? I don't know, I mean, because they don't, they can't sign in.
The only people I see are applicants. They're, they're on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
All right, Ken, uh, he's rebooting. His computer froze, so he's rebooting, he said.
All righty. Well, then, we're moving on to our first item of discussion. Discussion of Recommendation of Special Use Permit Application, Number 21-12695, Pool and Rear Yard That Abuts a Side Yard. Hunter, would you like to take us through?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna share the screen real quick and pull up the packet, just share right here. Just get to the memo and everything for everybody. Okay, so we received a special use permit application, which they're called special use permits now. Same thing as what conditional use permits used to be. 160D changed the language. Same concept, same procedure, same everything. The language has changed, that's why it's called special use permit. With that being said, we received an application for 608 Running Horse Lane for a pool that abuts their rear yard, abuts a side yard. Kind of a unique case here. And I'll kind of get into the overview. Put in the package for everybody. Application. But the property sits right here, kind of in a cul-de-sac. Rear yard is defined as pretty much the back built out of the house to the back property line. So the only one that kind of abuts would be this one. And it's kind of a front slash side yard, because the pool is going right here. And it's mainly because this house sits further back. With that being said, after, you know, discussion, we decided, you know, this is the only way, kind of, way to do it, because it does kind of meet that definition of abutting a side yard. The applicant submitted the condition, or the special use permit application on July 21st. I think I submitted that to you guys within the 15-day period. Within the application, you can see their proposal where the pool is going. The property is fully kind of screened and buffered already vegetatively wise. I did not have a chance to go out there and get pictures. I actually spoke to the applicant today. And I'm gonna be going out there next week, just for, for the council consideration, add pictures for the presentation. But looking on, on GIS, and you can see from this, I mean, it's, it's already fully kind of vegetated buffer. Pool is gonna go right here. The proposal of the pool and everything is fully compliant with what our ordinance states from, from a setback. It's going to be 67 feet on the left side and 48 feet on the right side. The minimum's 20. It's gonna be 140 feet, 44 feet from the rear. The applicant also conveyed to me, or when I spoke to them today, they have spoken to their neighbor. They're getting a written consent type thing from the 612. Because that is the only, I mean, it does, through the special use permit process, all property owner, adjoining property owners do have rights to be, they have to be notified and can speak for or against, but really the only one that kind of just directly affects would be that 612. And so I will, for the council meeting, they will have a written statement from that, that property owner. With that being said, before we kind of move any further, is there any questions from any of the board members?
I've got it pulled up on GPS and, and it looks, the coverage on GPS, on Google looks a lot better than even that, so.
It's, and you can see that in their proposed plan. I mean, all those are existing tree lines around, and they're, they're, and they're also even putting even additional screenage and shrubbery around the pool itself. So it's going to be kind of completely buffered to be, one, compliant with our ordinance, but two, it's not going to adversely affect any of the neighbors. I will also point out, you know, for this consideration, that their neighbor does have a, a pool, kind of, it's the same kind of situation. The neighbor's pool at 604 was actually put in before the ordinance change in 2011. Because that was one way I didn't know, kind of, you know, trying to get some clarification on this, because it's, it's a very similar concept here, where their backyard would be, you know, touching their rear yard, but the, the neighbor's pool was put in before the ordinance change. If there are no other questions, we can move in, I mean, kind of further down in the application. Is there any?
Question, question, I guess, just for clarification. I know that not only our ordinance, but the, I guess, the state regs or county regs require fencing. Is that existing or is it being added or what?
Fencing will be added part of their application. You can see, which, let me go back up here. Proposed fence, the dotted line that surrounds the property, will be fully enclosed around the back of the rear yard to enclose the rear yard and where the pool will be located.
Do we, obviously we don't, but can we require, request on these permits to get a, a drawing from the Southern Anthony and Silvampools? I know they do, they do one for the owners. It would be very useful.
Like a rendering?
Absolutely. We've had some, some applications that come through, we see the render, and it's very useful. I mean, you know, that way we can see, you know, what it's gonna look like, you know?
Yeah, I can definitely make that, that a, you know, point for future.
You figure they're doing one for the, for the homeowner.
Yeah.
If they get included in the package, I think it'd be beneficial for everybody.
For, that's one thing, like, once again, they submitted this application for planning board and we wanted, they initially sent in the, the initial zoning permit back in June during the overlap between myself and Rohit. So it's kind of, you know, and it took me about two or three weeks to get through the 30, 40 permits I had backlog. And one was this one, thought it was gonna be simple, and it already, you know, kind of already put them behind schedule to an extent, because then we found out they had to apply for a special use permit. This, their submission does meet all of our standards and our ordinance. You know, that is something that I can recommend to them. For example, the written consent from all the property owners. That's not necessarily something that we require, but it definitely helps their submittal and makes the process smoother, either with grant or council. And with that being said, I can definitely ask for that, to have that part of their packet, Village Council packet, application material.
Is that what I mean, enough to do it now, or is it something to consider to, to change or put in an ordinance, a rendering, or how do you, or do you think that's too much to ask?
Well, not everybody.
I don't think, yeah.
You're putting in a $100,000 pool?
Yeah, I didn't have, I didn't have like a CAD rendering for mine.
You didn't?
Potentially if it's a simple contractor, they're not gonna have the means of one thing or two, the, the technology to maybe do that. But it's definitely something that, I mean, I've seen them, even if they take existing photos and kind of make, make ship one. I mean, so that's why I'm gonna be going out there to the property and actually kind of getting visualization for the presentation for council.
Yeah, and then it'd be fine.
Especially moving forward for, for planning board, that's something that I will also be doing with you guys, just, I haven't had time with trying to coordinate and get, get in touch with the applicant and the property owner themselves until today, so.
Understood.
That's sort of, you know, just like the, as I mentioned, you know, in our pre-meeting, you know, that we don't require a letter from the adjoining property owner, but it just sort of answers questions. And, you know, it's one of those things for the future that, you know, it's not a requirement, but it makes it easier on you, Mr. Applicant.
Absolutely.
So with that being said, are there any additional questions on the application or the, the plans themselves?
No.
Kind of getting back, following, you know, the memo, it's kind of a straightforward, with the, with the way the lot is, the existing buffer, everything they're also proposing with the fence and everything. And the final fact's kind of, you know, this is kind of, for the memo, that's potential is that, you know, they're not gonna be endangering any public health or safety of any surrounding property owners or, or anything like that. It does, the applicant and the proposed pool does meet the required conditions and specifications within our ordinance. And it's not going to impact any of the surrounding properties. As you can see, as I mentioned, one of the properties already has a pool just like this. And so, you know, it's, it's kind of consistent with everything. And, and with that being said, staff makes a recommendation that, recommend this to council for approval. But if there's any additional questions, I'll be happy to answer them. The applicant, I spoke to them today. They had something tonight, they said they'd call them if there are any specific questions, but they will be present for the council meeting.
Have they already spoken to their next door neighbor? Like, I know they don't have the written letter, but are they verbally?
Yes.
In favor of it or find what it?
They are. Or what, at least what they conveyed to me. They're gonna have the, they're gonna have the neighbor write something with a signature for the council meeting.
Well, I'll make a motion based on that, that approve as submitted with the, that they also submit letters from their neighbors as promised. Because they said they were gonna do it, let's just.
So contingent upon that submittal?
Contingent on submitting the letters from the neighbor per their promise.
Yeah, and that should, they were gonna try to have that to me tonight. But it should be, it will be part of, like I said, the Village Council submittal.
All right.
That was a motion, only a second.
We need a second and then discussion.
I will give the second.
Switch roles. All right, is there any discussion? All right, let's, let's take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
There's Kenny.
Great.
Kent.
Is it verbal from Kent?
I think, I think we heard Kent say, yeah, aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go.
There it is.
That's seven.
John's throwing his voice.
All right, approved. Thank you, let's move on. Review and discuss gates at Marvin Construction Plans.
So we have another, we received a preliminary plat slash the construction plans for the Gates at Marvin subdivision. This is a subdivision at the, I'm gonna go back and show the screen.
And if there's a way to?
Can we minimize and have them both?
Is there a way to?
To do what now?
To have the, the WebEx participants?
Yeah, we can have them in a smaller window while we have this up. Click Participants. And go down to the docs, I believe. No, go, actually go up to the filter button on the side, see if that does it.
I mean, it's gonna leave.
Oh, oh, I, I. I can do it, I can do it. It's on the bottom screen, I just gotta drag it up.
Hey, you're gonna do it, I can do it.
All right, just drag it up, you should get it.
All right, sorry for the technical difficulties.
Wrong window.
Why is it picking up?
Oh gosh. You broke it. Oh.
If it's that much trouble, then we're good. So, so everyone on Zoom, or on WebEx, sorry, we're always on Zoom, everyone on WebEx, if you, oh, there we are. There it goes.
Yeah.
All right. If you have something to say, just go ahead and speak up, because it's hard, it's hard, we can't see everyone. All right, go ahead, Hunter, sorry.
So this subdivision is, falls under the rural subdivision category.
Question?
Go ahead.
What I'm seeing is still the pool at the kitchen on the screen share, have you, is it, have you moved on?
It says you're sharing, so you gotta get out of sharing.
Oh, I should be sharing.
Do you see a memo in front of you, John?
Oh, okay.
No, we see, no, all I see is the, the pool, the green area.
You're sharing, you're sharing GIS.
I haven't seen the PDF. There you go.
All right, okay.
So you guys have the memo in front of you now that says Gates Marvin?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is a, a submittal for a rural subdivision back in March of this year. Planning board made a recommendation to amend the rural subdivision language that council approved, which the, the parents right now is at least 12 acres. The, the site meets that, minimum lot size of two acres, all of that is fully kind of compliant with what is being proposed. I'll kind of go down here. Essentially, tonight is, they're, they're preliminary plot and construction plans. All that needs to be, be looked at is to review and make sure of compliance, which staff has already done that, the village engineer has already done that. And if planning board feels necessary, they can make the recommendation to approve it to council to put on for a public hearing. The only thing that is missing, and I'll kind of, the reason it is missing is the landscape and tree mitigation plan. The applicants are on here and they are working on that. Essentially, it was not submitted in the first place, because they're not necessarily removing a lot of trees. It's a fully wooded lot, they're only removing trees within the parameters of where the houses are going. And per our ordinance, that is a requirement. And so all they have to do, and it's, the village engineer states this in his review, and it's, I think, I put it in the memo. But all they're doing is basically going to show where the houses are going and the trees to be mitigated within the parameters of the driveway and the house. And that is fully compliant with our ordinance, and pretty much that ensures that that's the work that, if council approves that, once that, that set piece is in there and the engineer reviews it, then that's basically holds them accountable to make sure that that is the work that they're complying with and they can't go out there and like clear cut or whatever.
So they don't have to do, so for, for tree mitigation, they don't have to have like a full accounting of all the trees over a certain inch, like, over a certain diameter?
With, with this development, because where the houses are going, it is a fully wooded lot. I talked to the village engineer and we kind of also looked at how our ordinance reads, and that's something that's not, they're not remove, if they were removing trees outside of the building parameters, they would have to do something like that. But since where the houses are going, they just have to show this is a certain amount of percentage of trees, and that's it. They don't have to go out there and pretty much GIS pinpoint and get every reference of every tree that's on that property.
Okay, thanks.
If they.
So I have, you know, the, so we're putting in, it looks like there's gonna be septic field that's gonna be placed in the front and the back of some of these homes, so what about trees that are in that area? Are those not gonna be touched? Because typically, if you're gonna put a septic field in there, you've gotta get rid of roots and, and all that other kind of.
Every single home has a septic field, yeah.
You beat me to it, Rich.
Thanks, Jimmy.
I will let, I know Ben's on here, Mark.
This is Ben.
Hey, Ben. Do you wanna speak to that?
Sure. So one of the requirements in Union County is that you can't actually disturb any trees within a septic field area over a certain size. I wanna say that's two-inch caliper, but I could be wrong. So the large trees in that area will remain, the septic field fingers go around them as they follow the contours. The only thing that gets removed would be some of the small underbrushed trees in those, in that area to facilitate the construction of the trenches.
Good work, shows no trees, shows it's a flat lot.
Oh, it's a fully wooded lot, okay.
It's fully.
It's showing it's completely, look.
That's, oh, it's the lot below.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Oh, I thought this, this, see this little?
That's Broadmore.
Yeah. It's that fully wooded lot below.
So, so any trees on two calipers are not necessary to, like, they don't apply to the tree mitigation?
Correct.
This little thing here?
Yeah, we, we, we had a meeting with the, on that, with the developer and their group last week, and we kind of discussed this. We went through the ordinance, and it's like, our ordinance, it calls for us over a certain amount, and, you know, the type of tree and other stuff. And, and larger developments and other, and that Marvin has done in the past, certain amount of trees and the size of trees do have to be mitigated per what our ordinance states. If they don't meet that standard, then it's kind of, it's kind of wishful. I'm talking with the county, the new urban forest, urban forestry person from the county on this, because he's potentially gonna update our ordinances, because we still wanna be restricted, but it's kind of confusing even for me. But I spoke with the village engineer on what is required and what has been done prior, and this is what, he said, per our ordinance, as long as they show the mitigation area, that's kind of all that's needed outside, unless they are removing trees outside of that parameter.
So have they already applied for a septic permit then?
Have you guys applied for a septic permit?
Yes, we have approved septic permits for all those lots.
All right, so that goes through us, correct?
A septic permit?
Yeah.
It's all the county?
All county. Interesting.
So the, the, the drain fields are gonna run, be woven through, through the trees or something, as we, as I, as I guess I understood?
Yeah, so a good example of how those work, there's some developments, I'm trying to think one off the top of my head, and I can't. But a lot of times, we'll see some house, you'll see developments that have houses on one or two acre lots. The houses are kind of set back, and you'll see an island of trees in front of them, usually with either pine straw or sometimes small amounts of landscaping in those. And that's usually where the septic field's been placed, because you can't remove those trees. So to keep the maintenance on top of the septic field looking clean, and a lot of times it's shaded enough, it won't grow grass. A lot of times you'll see that with like pine straw or something on top. With these being fully wooded lots, it'll be, you know, those areas have a bunch of, of large water oaks and things like that. So you'll see the large water oaks, the small underscured brush will, is really all that will be removed. And it'll be seeded on top, and then if, if the seed doesn't take, then we'll look at doing some other landscape measures above those areas, because we want those to look really nice when you're going into those houses, going into those home sites on those driveways.
And there's enough room in between those larger trees for these, for these septic lines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, some of those trees are 40 or 50 foot apart, you know, some of them are closer. And you'll look, you can see if you look at the, how those fingers are spaced out. Not only is that due to the, how the contours flow, but some of that is also where there's some tight groupings of trees that you can't get around. So you have to go around those tight groupings of larger trees, because once you remove those stumps from those trees, you disturb the soil, the soil, and you change the engineering characteristics of the, of the soils on the surface, which in effect kind of the septic field forms.
Well, that makes sense, I just thought someone was not a very good drawer, so.
I'm going south. You want me to go north?
No, no, I'm saying deeper in.
Oh, this way?
Yeah, those trees, depending, I mean, yeah, some of those are towards the front of the property, per that. And so it's like, depending on the height and the size of those, those can be.
Street view.
Boy. Yeah.
Hard to imagine.
Yeah, so, and that's, and that's what our ordinance states, you know, if it's under a certain size, there's permits, the tree mitigation's not necessarily required, because it would be a, a lot for them to go out there and, and point every single one. But the, the intent of our ordinance is to save the larger canopy type trees, the older trees and stuff like that, for, for the preservation part of that. In regards to the tree mitigation, what's the timeline on you guys having that to me?
Martha, you wanna speak to that timing, Hunter?
Yeah, this is Mark, I should have that to you by the end of the week, Hunter.
Okay. So reviewing the rest of the plan, and I mean, we can go through it if need be. I'll kind of, I just need to know that, and I'll kind of get into what my, the recommendation will be, is that, you know, here's kind of the overview of the lots. All the lots are fully compliant with what the rural subdivision states with the two acre minimum, as well as where the house is gonna be placed, I mean, all, all applicable setbacks and stuff for the residential district. The, the construction plans have already been reviewed by the village engineer. There were a few comments that, it was mine, I think it was like 10 wordage, basically, that the applicant is going to revise and have new submittal plans submitted for the village council hearing. With that being said, it's not changing anything that lot design or any of that. It had, it's, it's just basically verbiage within certain things of their, in their plans.
Hopefully Lot 4 doesn't want a pool.
What about, if, if we're done with the tree, my question is, it looks like we're gonna have four entrances, or four driveways on Waxon Marvin Road, very similar, pretty close to each other. I mean, is the, I guess that's okay, we've looked at that.
They have to get approval, that's one thing, during their, through, through DOT. Has that been any conversation, Ben, with DOT on those driveway permits?
Yeah, we've had some conversation about that, since, since these are actually individual lots, they will actually be individual driveway permits. If they were smaller lots in a more conventional subdivision, it would be different, but these are actually all individual driveway permits that go in with the building permits to DOT.
Is that, so there's no distance in between?
There was a distance, and I'm gonna tell you that, that it was around 150 feet, but I'm gonna tell, but I'm probably gonna tell you wrong, but I'm happy to provide that information to Hunter, if that's something you guys would like to have. I can look it up, I just don't have it right in front of me.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be good information to have, if you can.
So I guess that was one of my other questions as well. So typically in a development, you have ingress and egress, so because it is a single family, then you wouldn't acquire something like that?
What, what do you mean, single?
Well, so if I were, if I were looking at a, into a larger development, sometimes you create a turn lane, so traffic can slow down to make the turn into that development. But since these are just single family homes, what is it, just a, just a typical driveway?
Just a.
It's a C-line, then?
Yeah, it's a typical driveway, because, and that's where it does kind of fall under our rural subdivision ordinance, because there's no extended infrastructure, and in most of those larger developments, that's why it goes through that process, because you are creating an ingress and egress, if it's, you know, for public or private use, because you're creating a new road to, to enter the, the development, and then you'll have, you know, the feeder roads or driveway cutouts off of those roads. With this one, since it's already having that existing road frontage, which is another part of the requirement to meet the rural subdivision definition, it's, it's just driveway ingress and egress for that property. They couldn't have, one of these properties had, for example, this wouldn't be compliant if one of these properties had a driveway access or something put through another property. That's why they all have their own compliant road frontage with our ordinance, as well as their own ingress, ingress and egress driveways off of that public frontage.
What about the, the visibility? We, we see on there that there's a lot of trees up front of Waxon Marvin Road. The concern is people pulling out of these driveways, Waxon Marvin's 45 miles an hour. I mean, is there, is there any rules or about how far the trees must be cut back for visibility sake, if somebody's on these driveways?
With DOT, anything that impedes line of sight within their right of way, they trim, or they ask the property owners to trim. I'm not sure, get back over all, where there're driveways, and you can kind of see it slightly on this plan. Some of the, there's a, Waxon Marvin Road, it was a 60-foot right away, if you pull back up on like Google Earth, there're driveways coming all the way out to the road. So meaning like, they're gonna have, that right of way should already be cleared to an extent where they'll have plenty, pretty line of sight vision.
I mean, if we're, if we're working on just this, from what we see, somebody coming 45 miles an hour in a car, it's there with all the trees that'd be concerning.
Once again, that's kind of part of that, that's where DOT gets in with, that's why they issue the driveway permits.
We push that over to DOT and hope they make the right call.
Part, part of that in our ordinance is that we, we give these plans slash, they, to receive their final plan, the final submission, they have to have, you know, those approvals from those outside agencies in those letters. So, you know, once they have that from DOT, I mean, they're not gonna be able to put the driveways in or do the development until they have that approval anyway.
Gotcha, well, it's just expressionary concern. I mean, I'm most concerned on Stacy Howard.
There looks like there's also a driveway, although there, there's not as much tree coverage, it looks like. That very last one, so right next to Lot 6. There's a driveway on that property that goes out to the road.
This one? Right there, is that what you're talking about?
I think so.
Would that be, hard to say if that's part of the property?
There, there's no existing, there's no existing driveway on that property.
So that's not part of the property?
No.
Okay.
No, this is, this is next door to it, but the house next door to Lot 6, looks like it's got a driveway that extends on to, at least, that so says Mama Google.
I don't see it.
Yeah, I don't hear.
According to GIS, I don't think that's the case. That driveway.
I mean, that driveway is further down.
See, I don't see anything.
It would be this way.
No, yeah, that's the property up there, yes.
Oops, now it can't work, here, you're talking about.
Keep going.
You're talking about that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's on the property.
No, no, that's the neighbor's driveway.
No, it's next door, that's what I'm saying though.
Oh, you're saying there is a drive.
Yeah, so right next to Lot Six.
And look at the tree coverage there.
Yeah, once again, that's a, I mean, that that's, that's, that's on DOT because they, to issue those permits, once again, they're looking at line of sight and safety. Um, with that, with that being said, if, is there any other questions on the specific plans?
On the plans, not too much.
Yeah.
So.
Any other questions?
So staff's recommendation, once again, you know, you guys can make the the uh motion however, is that since the engineers already reviewed these outside of the landscaping mitigation plan, which is a very minor type thing, but we we do want to require this part of the final submittal for council's consideration. Um, staff recommends that we make a recommendation to approve and it's contingent upon they get me those new plans and the engineer reviews them and signs off on compliance for it to go to council for final, final review.
And we really can't say anything anyway, if DOT approves it, we're, our hands are tied.
All those, like I said, part of their final application is part of those um outside agency approvals.
Before you all move on to that, one quick thing, you said they, you said the plan received this after the fifteen days, correct?
Correct, um, I received these plans, that's probably been, it's been three or four weeks. Because Mike reviewed them, I mean, August third is when he submitted submitted me the letter and I think I gave that to him the week or two before. The one thing that, once again, being here in mind and learning the process of everything, going through the ordinance, it does state that for this consideration, it was supposed to be submitted to you guys fifteen days prior to consideration. Um.
Normally you all waive this whenever there's a staff reason that we don't get it to you on time. As long as the person, as long as the applicant has submitted on time, we usually have to go to.
Do we have to vote to waive it or can we just say, okay?
So you need a vote, a motion to waive the fifteen day submission requirement?
Alright, would anyone like to make a motion to waive the fifteen day submission requirement?
What was the reason?
It was Chris Hunter, there was a changeover.
The cha, with the changeover and what's getting learned in the processes with submitting it to you guys fifteen days prior, I I didn't, I didn't read that until
I'll make a motion.
Preparing for this this week.
Right, so look, Michael Bell makes a motion to waive. Anyone online wanna?
So Melinda, I just don't know, I'll give it to you.
Save Melinda, save Melinda from seconding.
Oh, you're allowed.
Can I second? I'll second.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Well done.
I second.
There, Ken came.
Alright.
I don't mind, I'm seconding.
Rich second.
Oh, it is Rich.
Um, alright, any uh, any more discussion?
This is just on the waving.
Yeah, just on the waving.
It's on waving fifteen days.
You're good, I'll proceed here now.
Um, now I've said my procedural thing, all in favor of waving? Aye.
Aye, here.
Aye.
Alright, so moved.
Thanks, everybody.
Alright, now, um, are we ready to make a motion with contingencies to approve?
Do you want us to suggest one?
I guess before, before, yeah, we move to a motion, are there any additional questions for the board, either for myself or the applicant?
I've heard everything that you two, the tree mitigation would be submitted finally pending DOT's review, so no, I'm I'm fine. You two?
I recommend you suggest a motion here.
Okay.
Uh, I would like to see the DOT tree mitigation as part of the application.
Okay.
We'd like to see it so that, meaning like review it again, or we'd like to make it contingent on?
Well, they're gonna, I I think both, I mean, I think we have to make a contingent on DOT's approval, but I think just for future, I'd like to see what that is.
Okay.
Just in hindsight?
I mean, because it it doesn't look like there's any tree mitigation on that curb cut right there at all.
I said DOT had, they maintain anything within that that right of way. And so the driveway is coming out into that right of way, that's why they have to get the driveway permits because they're encroaching within that right of way.
I get it.
Um, and that's, it's a sixty foot overall, I think, I think Marvin uh Wax on Marvin Road is a forty-five foot total road, so then there's still an additional ten feet on each side.
Fifty-five or sixty.
So what?
Then it means everybody does fifty-five or sixty.
Well, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the right of way, not not the speed limit.
So um, if if DOT has that right of way kind of area, then is the developer required, is the developer required to pull the trees down or does NC DOT pull the trees down?
From my understanding, DOT, either developer has to get approval from DOT to do it or DOT is, they they're responsible for maintaining anything within the right of way or anything that is a safety or anything concerned. It's actually happened out here on Marvin School Road today, I don't know if anybody drove down that road. There was a few areas of concerns, there's been landscapers that I'm, I'm assuming it's been DOT, uh, we were reaching out to them anyway on this, but they have trimmed up tree lines because of certain safety concerns in line of sight.
Is that for wires, overhead wires or was it?
No, no, it's it's, it's one line of sight, the trees that overhang that could create a safety issue if it's a storm or something like that. That's, that's uh, anything within DOT, T's right of way is their responsibility. If it was within the villages' right of way, it would be our responsibility to to maintain.
So then.
Both of these are state roads.
So if they have to pull, if they have to remove trees for sightline issues with NC DOT, does that then get considered also in the tree mitigation? Or is that just kind of considered a separate thing and, I know there's plenty of trees there, but you know, just as a procedural thing, like how?
That's a very good question. Um, from what I've seen in the past, just trying to get familiar with certain, certain projects here is that if there's ever type of the tree mitigation plan is part of their initial submittal. Um, I think there's been other subdivisions, not necessarily rural subdivision, that have had um their tree mitigation plan resubmitted to an extent where I'm not sure if it's ever went to you guys, but it has been reviewed by staff and engineer um to be compliant with our ordinance and as long as it's still compliant and not significantly changing um what was originally approved, it's just kind of an administratively approved thing. So my understanding of that would be some, since DOT and outside agencies requiring it, it would, they would still have to get the tree removal permit maybe, but it's not gonna be something that would have to go back to the process and then resubmit any plans.
Okay.
And if it is, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of that when when need be, because we can just do kind of an amendment to the original plan.
Okay, do you wanna recommend how how we?
I would strongly suggest.
Yes.
You suggest the one.
So staff's recommendation is for the planning board to um recommend approval of the preliminary plat, construction plans for the gate, gates of Marvin, or the gates of Marvin contingent upon the new submittal of their landscape slash tree, tree mitigation plan, which once that um I guess for the motion, uh.
And.
Submittal of that and successful review um and approval from the village engineer as well as have for the final submission. Um, the, are you writing this out? Any outside agency approval? Do you want to restate that now?
Technically, if the motion can't be restated, it's invalid, but um technically, but uh, just just walk through it one more time.
Alright, so the recommended motion for this would be that planning board recommend approval of the preliminary construction plans contingent upon submission of the updated landscape and tree mitigation plan, which will then need approval from the village engineer of for compliance. So that's part of the contingency.
Contingent, okay, contingent upon submission of the, contingent upon submission of the update, of the updated tree mitigation plan and approval by the village engineer.
By review and approval. Yeah, and then and just so we can also say in contingent upon approval of outside agencies or just say NC DOT.
NC DOT driveway permits?
Yeah.
I would catch that on the rewind.
I I might be able to get through this.
I can help you, just a few minutes.
So that we don't crash and burn here.
I'll make sure to.
Alright, I I'm gonna try, i- is there anyone else, uh, we'll, we'll have another discussion period, but anyone else have any questions before I try to get through this motion? Alright, here none. Alright, I move to approve the gates of Marvin preliminary construction plans with the, oh, God, just the word just flew out of my head. Contingent, contingent upon um the
The submission.
Submission of a tree mitigation plat.
Plan.
Which would plan.
Tree mitigation.
Plan, which would then be approved, have to be approved by the Marvin engineer.
Be reviewed and approved.
Reviewed and approved. Oh, geez, Louise.
May I, may I just? I'll, I'll, I'll say it and someone say so moved.
Uh, well, do, go that, do this, do that.
One thing on their letter, they they say the developer shall submit a landscape slash tree mitigation plan for approval prior to beginning work as well.
So the process is.
Just from senior engineer.
Yeah, so the process is that they submit that in their construction plans and that this gets once again approved by council.
Okay.
Um, for them to do the work, they still have to um pull the site plan or the um they have to get a grading and tree removal plan or tree permit sorry. And that has to be follow what was approved in these plans. And if there, I mean, like I said, there can be deviations from that, but it it still has to kind of follow the same characteristic. They can't, basically, the intent of that tree mitigation landscape plan is so they don't clear cut a lot. Like basically, they're, they're defining where they're taking out trees and that's kind of the only areas that they're allowed to. Anything without those parameters, they would have to have a mitigation type plan.
I'd love to see the before and after. I mean, the the survey with the existing trees and then the after, because it just looks like there's just a thousand trees. But, well, oh, my, has there, or has there been a public information meeting on site?
That's not required for something as small.
It's not required?
Yeah.
Is that only a part for major developments?
Yeah, the way, again, I have the, the rural subdivision, it's, and we can kind of discuss this later, but the process, it states that it's got its own process and it states that the final plat and that stuff must go through the same procedure or have the same requirements as a major subdivision, but there's certain things that the major subdivision requires that it doesn't comply to this. And and or, and that was part of the reason they didn't have the tree mitigation plan in the first place because it was so kind of confusing the way ordinance reads. That's gonna be something that staff's gonna take a look at and trying to clarify on that because it kind of references a a greater process that doesn't, and and same thing for the minor subdivision, it it's kind of a extra step that people have to do that doesn't that when it, when it's clearly laid out in our ordinance, we're saying you're not adding this extra like infrastructure and stuff, it shouldn't kind of be this complicated.
Okay.
Austin.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to to recommend approval of the preliminary plat and construction plan for the gates at Marvin subdivision contingent upon submission of the landscape and tree mitigation plan and contingent upon the approval from the village engineer and external agencies?
And DOT.
That's external.
Yeah, external agencies.
Right.
Perfect.
I'll move, I'm, I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
There we go.
Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome.
I hope you don't have COVID. Just want to throw that out there. Don't put that in the notes, please.
That'll go in a minute.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, uh, let's vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Michael, are you?
We got it.
Kent, can you give us a bit of vocal?
Aye.
There you go.
Did I hear this first time?
Uh, no, I think there's a delay maybe.
That's right, and my apologies, like this is the first time going through that process, it's kind of something that reading the ordinance, it's not as clear as it's, it's not easy to understand what is required and not required at points.
Well, it's been approved, so.
You made it through, that's fine.
Moving on.
Carter.
Alright.
Alright, Hunter, you wanna hit the next one?
Yeah, the these next two could be, should be pretty straightforward. Um, the village recently annexed, and we'll start with the uh first item, I disagree. Recently annexed eight-eight oh-two Bonds Grove Church Road back during their uh July meeting.
Yes, normally what we would, what we've done in the past is we bring this to you all in the process uh before council does the annexation. Frankly, this was my first annexation, so we were just a little unfamiliar with the process, but it's fine that we do this afterwards, just as long as it's within sixty days of the annexation.
Yeah, so this is kind of just for for um, just for everything to be compliant. So these properties have been recently annexed into the village of Marvin. They were both recent, um, you know, part of Union County, part of Union County's R forties zoning. Uh, specifically eight-eight oh-two Bonds Grove Church Road is um a parcel that has an existing structure. Um, hold on, I've got it right here. And uh, per, you know, state, state statutes that we have to now give them a zoning designation that is compliant with obviously our zoning and not the counties. Um, it's being recommended for for both, uh, and we'll focus on eight-eight zero-two for the Marvin Residential District. Everything, uh, the two residential districts we have is our Marvin Residential and our Marvin Union County. The biggest difference there is the Union County is, was kind of created for annexation purposes, but it was also created because some of the county, depending on what residential district it was in, the county has smaller setbacks. For example, fifteen compared to twenty that we have in our um Marvin Residential. However, this property here in eight-eight zero-two abuts all Marvin Residential. It, their current structure, current development is everything compliant with their current Marvin Residential. And so that it's being recommended that um this property is new, uh, be rezoned slash uh, the zoning designation of Marvin Residential.
And council will hold a public hearing on this after you all.
But a- as Austin said.
There is no problem.
Yeah, yeah, all, as Austin said, typically when we get an annexation application, it's part of the process. You go ahead and the recommendation we give the zoning, the recommended zoning designation, so when council um, if they vote to annex, they go ahead and then also kind of rezonate at the same time, it's, um, but we just.
So it just comes through us just to make sure whether, you know.
Mm-hmm.
But this is really a rubber stamp kind of.
Pretty much.
Okay. My thought.
So is there any questions from?
Do we, are we doing each one individually?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, okay. I don't have a problem.
So you're recommending a designation?
You have the motion, you want me to?
I can do it again. Or a motion to recommend designating parcel zero-six-two-one-zero-zero-seven-A as our Marvin Residential.
Anyone wanna? So move that one? Alright, I'll second. Um, discussion?
What's your tier?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Three of us here.
Heard you that time, Kent.
Aye.
Kent, we're good.
Alright, so moved.
Okay, the next item is the, it's a very, it's the same situation with just previous annex, it's actually the parcel that abuts the um, the park. We've owned this property, apparently it's just has not been actually in Marvin.
That, there's, there's a reason behind, there's actually a reason behind this. Uh, when the park was annexed, when it was bought and annexed ten years ago, at the time, state law, and I think state law still says that your, a satellite annexation can be no larger than ten percent of the primary corporate limits. And at the time, adding that one parcel would have brought us over the ten percent. And then in the years after we've grown, it was just never annexed. We discovered this last year playing with GIS.
Well, let's, let's make it part of.
Go ahead, bring that in.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it's been annexed, once again, the the park and all that's on residential, it's never at, it, it's never intended to be developed, so it really doesn't kind of matter.
Well, it has trails on it.
And it has trails, so just because.
It's just trails, okay, so just like it has developed on there.
Just the, since the park is on, is on the Marvin Residential, it's, once again, to kind of be consistent, that's the recommendation of staff.
So why would it not be zoned something else, like the, do parks, do parking wrecks not have different types of zoning?
So it, parks.
I think that it would affect it even more.
Parks are permitted use in our resident, in our residential district. Parks in public use in our Marvin, our district.
Okay, so they don't have their own?
No, and and typically.
Residential, commercial.
Two, two, but we have, I guess, we have, we have three. We technically, I guess, have two zone, two or three, three zoning districts, one being Marvin Residential being, and then the other one being the Union County Residential, which is still Marvin's, but the stint, the permitted uses and setbacks and dimension requirements are different than the residential um district.
It's like those donuts.
We tech, yeah, well, the really the only one that's on Marvin that the MU Marvin Union County Residential is um Wedding and Chase. When it was annexed. Um, however, I think technically in our zoning ordinance, we have a business district. It's not applicable anywhere, we don't have, we don't have a zone zoning app. The other zoning districts are then just our conditional, our conditional zoning districts, which is like the Marvin Gardens, the Amber Meadows.
Publix, the other area.
Yeah, the Publix, that, I think we have three different conditional zoning districts. And those are, have their own set of standards and stuff that, so um, really, the residential is, I mean, that's the one that is um kind of the best and highest use per se from a zoning standpoint for this property. And I think, like I said, parks and rec, parks and recreation or or public parks are a. And I think, like I said, parks and rec, parks and recreation or, or public parks are a permitted use within our district.
Okay, so remind us what the, I know the number now, but what, what is it that we're, what is the, yeah, our, our residential, but it's?
You want to do it?
Yeah, do the motion?
Oh.
For the parks.
Motion to recommend designating parcel zero six two oh seven zero zero five C as R Marvin Residential.
Anyone online want to take this one? Spread the wealth around.
Spread the motions.
Spread the motions around.
I'll make it so clear.
Who was it?
I think that was Ken.
Kent, yeah.
Yeah.
Kent.
Thank you, Kent. Anyone want a second?
I'm back.
Was that Kent? I'm not sure who said that.
I could, yeah.
Could I ask? Could you?
John?
You've got a motion and a second. Can I ask a question? Because I, I've had difficulty hearing. I'm not sure it's the wifi where I am or what. So, does, does the village actually own that parcel?
Yes.
Now?
We would-
That's what I thought I heard.
We've always-
But even though, yeah, even though we owned it, it was not annexed, and now we can annex it.
Yes.
Was that the point?
Yes.
No, just, like I said, I, I was having some difficulty hearing or understanding. Now, now you can go go vote.
Thank you, John. All right, uh, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, we got approval. Moving on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, now the next item is purely for discussion. We, uh, I received a minor subdivision application for nine eight one nine Chestnut um, Road, which is off of Marvin Road. It's part of, is it Marvin Estates? It's right outside of Marvin Estates.
Yes, well, it might be right outside. It's right, right near Marvin Estates.
Yeah. Essentially, once again, because of our procedures in our ordinance, a minor subdivision, you know, is defined as no more than four lots, no create, no extension of any type of infrastructure, if it's water, sewer, uh, roads. The, all the lots must be conforming with, with the zoning ordinance, which would be the one acre minimum size. And uh, the plat that's been submitted is compliant with that. Now, once again, based off our ordinance, and from my understanding, I think minor subdivisions have went to planning board and then council in the past, and that is the process. However, tonight, um, I just wanted to get these guys in front of you. You know, if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but there isn't, I mean, no formal vote because um, the, the applicant has to, technically, the applicant has to submit a final plat, and that, that's what is voting on, voted on by planning board, planning board and council. But this is kind of their preliminary plat submission, and uh-
So they want to put four homes on Marvin Road.
So, that's, that's not necessarily what, that, that's not necessarily part of what this, um, the minor sub- and, and when you're considering a minor subdivision, whatever that use or that development is not necessarily taken into consideration at all. There's an existing house, and, and yes, it, it pretty much, it is most likely going to be developed. Or like lots one, two, and three will be developed for, for new residential structures. There is an existing barn right here, from my understanding, that will be removed. However, this subdivision is still compliant at this time, because that structure then becomes the primary structure of this new lot, and it does, it is compliant with setbacks and all of that. But for them to develop that for a house, uh, that would have to be removed. And that would, that would be something that the zoning administrator, when they come for the zoning permits for the, for the houses, they have to just be compliant with um, with our ordinance. So it's-
So where is, they've been trying to sell that law for a long time. It's right here across from-
It's right here, yeah, here's Firethorn, here's the goal.
Is that, but is that the, is that the FSBA? I thought that was further down the, further down the road.
It's his one, right? No, it's his one.
It's that?
There's the house.
Yeah, the one-
There's Chestnut.
This one?
The one before Saddle, that I think is-
Yeah, yeah.
That's been on and off for sale for five years.
Yeah, I mean, that's the one that's had the for sale by owner signs up for, yeah, right? This is not, this is not that one, no. This, this, that house is very different than that little ranch, so. So I have, I have a couple of questions about this.
I think it's everything.
Oh, yeah, no, it is, okay, yeah.
Is it everything, yeah, it's everything, this whole parcel right?
Yeah, here's a, here's a bigger kind of, you know, I zoomed out, but um-
So they have somebody that's like willing to buy the whole thing and then wants to subdivide it?
Um, so I'm not, so currently the property owners are Margaret and Richard Beck. I think they own the whole property, all the existing houses. They are subdividing the additional three lots and potentially, I don't know if it's contingent where those three lots are going to be sold to someone else.
Oh, gosh, or if they're looking to subdivide.
But since they are the property owner currently, they're subdividing it, which is, once again, they have the right to as a property owner. It meets our definition. And what happens after that is, you know, kind of out of our, um, you know-
But they want to subdivide their lot. So are they not part of that? Because like, that, that's kind of a, a neighborhood.
Of the estates.
So do they not have an HOA that says you can't subdivide? Because they're a rural, they're considered a rural neighborhood.
So I went back through-
Are they in that subdivision?
See, I, I went back-
Individual.
Yeah, I went back through the estate's plan. There has been approved other minor subdivisions with one within the actual development itself. However, I, to your point, I do not think this is part of that. They do talk about the 125 foot view shed buffer though, so I'm not 100% sure. For our, for all we care about, it is compliant with that, because even though-
For tonight, what do we just, what do we?
Previously, just discussing, I'm going, I'm trying to go ahead and get in front of you, so when the, when we have the actual final plat next month.
Should just give us a heads up.
Yeah, pretty much, but-
I mean, my, my understanding on this topic, I actually talked to Revit about it a couple of years ago, and he said that it's, it meets um, the requirements for subdivision because the lots are on a public road as opposed to the private road. I don't know if that's within the HOA, rules and regulations, or where that came from, but that, that was kind of the final thing that he told me, is that you could subdivide those lots because they were, they were on a public road and not within the private roads of the subdivision, but-
But then we're talking about-
To validate on that.
So-
That would make sense.
Yeah.
Just like ingress, we'd have to leave off of Marvin Road, because otherwise we'd be creating a flat line.
Correct.
For, for there are road behind there for people to enter.
So then NCDOT would have to then approve driveways?
Correct. It's not, it's not the similar situation of what we just went through with the rural subdivision. We have minor rural and then major subdivisions.
They just don't meet the rural, rural requirement?
They don't, they don't, because they're under four lots. The rural, the rural is no more, no creation of four more lots, which you're going to have four lots here. Technically, there's one existing, so you're, they're creating three new, but it's, it's four overall, so they're, they're complying with that. It must exit, um, it must front an existing road. The three lots that are being created will have all ingress, egress off of Marvin Road, so that, that is compliant. The lot widths and minimum frontage are also compliant with what our ordinance states. In regards to the existing structure on the, what is lot four in Chestnut Road, that, that, there's our existing structure there, and that's kind of actually the primary lot, so the other lots created just have to now be compliant with what our minor subdivision states, which lots one, two, and three all are, and kind of to that point, they are affronting a public road.
So, go ahead.
Correct. And they're all substantial, should be rectangular.
Yep.
At right angles, yeah, so there, yeah, that does fall within there.
Technically, if it follows all of our guidelines and all of those things-
Why is it going to you guys?
Well, I mean, like pragmatically speaking, right, like if it follows all of the rules, right, and I can appreciate like side yard abutting, a back, backyard abutting, right, just to make sure that it's not going to be like, hey Kevin, as I like jump in my pool, right, okay, so fine. But with something like this, if it follows all of the rules, then we're basically just being like, go forward, because-
Yeah.
Oh, if we set ourselves up for so much trouble for like, nope, because-
Correct.
It follows the rules that we've already established. It's just our job to make sure that it does follow the rules. Is that correct?
Yes, that is completely correct. In my previous job, any minor subdivisions were all administratively approved, because it, and-
It's yes or no, effectively.
There's a clear definition of what it meets. If those lots, they conform with what's already adopted in your ordinance standards, to kind of your point, why does it need to go through the final plat approval process?
Well, yeah, and I just want to make sure, like, when it does show up next month, that we understand what our rule, and then-
Yeah, and it's pretty much, you know, this is once again, they ask me, ask me any questions slash that I can have, but-
Sure.
If it's fully compliant, which, you know, off initial review, like I said, it, it, it has where the proposed setbacks are. What happens is, let's just say hypothetically, we're actually voting on it, it's approved and I, and it goes to council. Well, once these lots are now subdivided, on the plat, it will show the view shed buffer in those, in those lots. When they come get a zoning permit, they have to have, you know, their, their lot specific and where they're placing whatever, if the house, for example, has to then be within those parameters.
Yep.
So it's kind of, it's very straightforward. There's nothing that, planning board nor really council outside of the plat requirements, which are the certain certi, certificates and stuff like that, which that's why we're not voting on it, because I don't have a final plat. The actual subdivision itself, yeah, and, and there's no way we can kind of deny it unless it, there is something that's not compliant with our ordinance.
Okay, the only thing I, and I know this is not necessarily a compliance thing, but it's just being a good neighbor type of thing. So the house next door has a writing ring, um, right there, and a barn. I mean, they've got, they, they're, it looks like they are functioning as a rural, a true rural um, plot. And now, they built next to what they thought was also a rural parcel. And now it's going to be, there's going to be a house right up next to their writing ring. So, I mean, just for that neighbor's, I mean-
Once again, it's legally, it's, and it's kind of like, that's where the vested right, the amount of, I mean, certain things like that, because ordinance just change every time. Unless, once again, this was part of the, it's a original subdivision, and even then, there's still stipulations in the state statute of how many years have to surpass before it can be subdivided again, or if it can be subdivided. With that being said, legally, there's nothing that we, we can do to either deny it or even have to do to notify them that, um, that, that-
But their neighbor will be notified, correct? That they're subdividing.
Well, and that's where it gets interesting, because yes, to your point, in our ordinance, when it says that we have to follow the procedures in, it says, it's 150 dot 050, which is literally, it says plas middle for major subdivisions. It calls for a hearing. So as far as what our ordinance states, there will be a hearing, but legally, there's nothing that we can, because it's, it's going to put the village in a bind if they try to deny it, because it's-
No, I totally get that. I just, if I were that neighbor, I'd, I'd be pretty upset.
But once again, with, with any type of minor subdivision, it's, it's different from a rural, because that is an actual kind of like housing development. Anybody can subdivide property as long as it's compliant, and you don't have to state what it's for or whatever, because then they have to pull those individual permits and be compliant with whatever development they want to do on those individual lots.
Yeah, I mean, they still meet the by rate requirement, so the transitional density doesn't even apply, so. All right, thank, well, thanks for answering that question. I just was-
But yeah.
That, that writing ring though, isn't it, right, right, it's, it's closer off to the bottom right, so it's really not that close to where the uh-
No, that, there, the ring, um, there's a ring right next to um, lot number one, the lot, lot line number one.
So along that horizontal line, is that the, that, that one area that looks like gravel or?
Yeah, that right there. It looks like a, it looks like a ring, because it looks like a-
Because I thought the writing ring was further to the right, so there's something else there, you're saying, okay, I see what you're saying.
I think they, they might have two rings, um, because there's a barn that, I, I don't know what's on that lower right hand corner, but I'm pretty sure that that upper one, um, abutting lot one is a writing ring connected to a horse barn. I don't know if they have animals, but-
Looks like, you can see where it's fenced there. It's two separate fences or two separate pens.
So.
That's the place where they've done all of the work there in the front, having a level.
Yeah, they've done a really nice, they've done a really- They spent a lot of money getting that thing, you know, so-
They've done a really nice job, kind of got a whole face left.
And, and, and yeah, it's like, I think they're, they might have to, and this is, you know, it's kind of a side topic, as I mentioned, ordinance is, there's some very confusing language in there and processes. I'm not saying that this isn't something that should have to go through approval process to, uh, planning board and council.
Absolutely.
But at the same time, it's, you know, even kind of to your point about, you know, notifying neighbors, it's like, that's where even the use by right and certain things like that, it's kind of a, it's a fine line to walk because of, from a legal standpoint, and I, all your concerns are very valid, and I'm, I'm right there with you, but it's like, it's, I don't know how we, I, one, I don't even know in our ordinance, how we kind of juggle that. And, you know, the only thing is like, we have those ordinances in place for, you know, if there's, is a structure that is put on lot one, and it's a house, it has to do meet the applicable side setbacks. Those sides, I mean-
And I, I think, I think we all get that. I think, I think it's just unfortunate that there's a, there are horse owners right next door, and there's going to be a lot, you know, there could potentially be a lot of construction that could really upset their animals.
Yeah, and I-
But we're, we're the rural crusaders here, so.
I've, uh, and I've kind of, you know, I've seen it kind of happen before with, with certain situations. It's like, you know, as the village, we're going to do everything to make sure everybody's happy, but when there comes a point where-
There's only something you can do.
Do, and, and then it becomes a civil issue. I mean, if it's, if people aren't still happy, and that's once again, why we, there's, we're trying to make sure we do everything in the proper process and, and don't, uh, mess anything up. But if there's no other questions on that, I wanted to put that on your radar, and once again, you guys kind of have the documentation. There was, there should be a final plat submittal that will be then submitted to you guys 15 days prior to the September planning board meeting. And that will be reviewed by me first to make sure it meets everything that's in our ordinance regarding to um, the 1050.
All righty. All right, boys, you've done passing notes. We can move on to the Marvin Heritage District timeline.
No one's supposed to see that. Good thing my eyes aren't.
Wanted to give you guys an update on the MHD and everything. Uh, I knew that, you know, the last meeting, there were some questions about it, and it was kind of my first month. As of right now, the MHD is, you know, still moving forward. The um, everything that's been done in the past, the, the district that's drawn, every, the, the language that was in that form base code, all of that is still being used. The way it's being kind of modified is the process of how it's going to be used. As I mentioned in the previous meeting, part of the reason that it kind of got held up was council wanted to have some type of authority to regulate residential design standards for any type of subdivision. And legally, they can't do that per the state statute.
Unless.
Outright, yeah, unless. The way that we kind of got around it, and I think, I think, you know, I, in previous, in my previous job, I had all these ideas, and I'm like, well, why can't we maybe do this? And then with some help with some colleagues and stuff, I was able to like, hey, let's figure this out, how to do this legally. The way we got to it was, yeah, legally, not one's going to upset anybody, hopefully. The, the intent here is that we're going to take a lot of the information that's in the form base code that, you know, the committee, planning board, everybody has already kind of signed off on. And that's going to then become a, to the, most, all the language in there will then be transitioned into what, we're going to create a, another conditional zoning specific district for the MHD. A lot of the other stuff, and when it comes to residential design standards, design standards in general, will, will go into a small area plan, which will then kind of also be adopted into our land use plan. So it's kind of a guideline procedure that, hey, this isn't our future land use plan. And that's what it is. It's a visionary document, document that-
Kind of like what we had a while ago. We had one of those.
So, yeah. So, then the intent is to, with it now being a sad, but once the district, so the timelines on those is to have a plan, a draft of that plan, um, a for, a draft of that formal plan to you guys, maybe during the September meeting. The plan needs to be approved first before we can actually create the district per se with specific zoning language. We can do them at the same time. I'm not sure if that's the route I want to go. Potentially, we might break it up and do the plan in September and, and review the, um, language in October. It's, once again, it's nothing that you guys haven't seen before. No, nothing's significantly changing, and what is, I'll make sure to, you know, highlight and key out for you guys.
So would now be, they'll have to apply for a conditional use permit, like a CUP or?
Kind of, um-
Or we did, we got rid of CUPs.
They're SUPs.
SUPs.
So it's, it's, so, the language, kind of, it's kind of the same process, yes. Instead of where the original intent was to rezonate the whole district at, at once, we're not going to do that. We're creating this boundary on where the, it, I think this option provides flexibility on staff, council, and, and property owners, because it's literally, go at your own pace, because, you know, it kind of was brought up in the last meeting about we can rezonate, but we can't make people comply and do things. And, and I think that was, uh, the way this is now is that they would apply for rezoning for this conditional district. The only people that can apply for this district is the people within the original MHD boundary. Meaning, um- Meaning, um, someone over George Martin Gardens cannot apply for this specific language or something like that. It, it's specifically the properties within the MHD boundary, um, are eligible to apply for this district.
And does it include commercial and residential or just like for the commercials?
So the way, so the, so the way the district's now going to be created is that it's just create establishing what we're calling the Marvin Heritage District, Marvin Heritage Conditional Zoning District. In that district, once again, all those permitted uses and, and specific non-permitted uses are still going to be outlined in the specific language. However, what the conditional zoning district does, it provides that flexibility. So, um, have it up there, but if you guys recall what the original district was being proposed, it was like the residential, you had the civic and all that other stuff. That's not necessarily scrapped, it's, but it's, it's providing flexibility to where, when the property owner or developer comes to apply for this district, they must have a site plan of the development, draft development agreement and all of that. So it provides flexibility where, okay, yeah, and, and what was originally being proposed residential is over here, but what if somebody has a greater vision for some residential unit somewhere else or, or within the district? It, it, it provides that kind of flexibility because who knows how this develop, it develop, or this district's kind of going to develop out. We've created a, a set kind of vision guidelines within the form base code and what now will be that small area plan, but what this does is kind of provide that flexibility for, for property owners to get creative sort of with their property. What happened, you want to answer a question, you know, keep going.
Will there be a percentage, like limitation of how much commercial versus residential? Cause like if everyone's going at their own play, pace and they, they, they can apply for zoning if they have some vision. If, you know, this is not going to happen, but if everyone wants commercial, you know what I mean? And they all apply.
And that wasn't the original draft of the form base code?
Yes, it was, it was a density ratio. That's still, that's still the intent. Um, however, I guess let me get to where the process is because this, I'll, that hopefully maybe will answer some of your questions.
I'll be quiet.
Is, if an applicant comes for, you know, if it's, I, I know there's been certain things thrown around if it's over here at the Odell Pridus property, if there's been, um, at the Finch property. Whatever it is, they have to have a speci, a site specific plan, a draft development agreement with their conditional zoning application. Pretty much, they do all the legwork for the development and then it's, and then it's submitted on application. What this does is provide, you know, planning board gets, gets input on it and provides a recommendation. And then council can, um, approve or deny. To your point about density and stuff like that, the density is, is, is what it is to an extent where it's being outlined in the ordinance of, um, that ratio.
One, I think, or I think you're actually talking about, um, what was previously discussed about how to ensure a property owner isn't just going to have one, uh, one, one house and a bunch, a bunch of commercial and call it mixed use. Or one commercial building and a bunch of residential and call it mixed use.
Well, just, you know, there's a balance, right?
Yeah, that's.
Like everybody, everyone could choose to go commercial and what's to stop them, right? Like what's to stop them applying for commercial except for us? But I mean, like that, you know, unless it's in the actual language, that there is a, a percentage balance of residential versus commercial. You know, as we all, you know, go on and off boards, whoever's in the approval seat, you know, five years from now could just say, everyone can be commercial. So it's like, you know, you, you want to set down some rules that will be followed moving forward.
So, so yeah, that's like, everything that's within that form base code is going to be in the, the small area plan. Um, the intent here is, yeah, that there is that kind of concern slash, you know, council members can change and stuff like that. However, that also creates a greater issue if we were to do it the other way because then development may never happen. Um, what this is doing is providing that flexibility for if it's when staff change, you know, what staff is there currently, what council members are elected there currently and all of that because it's got to be, it's got to go through the proper legislative process to be quote unquote, to be rezoned for that development. Um, if the current elected body, the public, the surrounding properties of that application, you know, all of that, because it's public hearing, has the right to give their, their input on, on development. That elected body at the time, you know, if it's this one or not, they make the, they ultimately make that decision and it's like, the, the language is trying to be directed enough where there is no kind of loophole type thing. Um, but it is also flexible because it's kind of hard to maybe see what type of development is going to happen and when. And, and that was my only kind of big concern of how the form base code was already listed out was like, you know, it had that exit, two existing, it had that just two properties as existing and it stated that it couldn't change. And I'm like, well, who, who's to say that somebody come in and buy it and want to make that like a, a, some type of slight commercial? They can't do it by right because everything in the district, until it's approved for that conditional zoning, stays residential. So everything that's within the by right of residential, that's the only thing that they can do by right to an extent. Even if it's a residential subdivision, they're, they're being constricted by what the Marvin Residential District states. When, you know, and let's take the, that property, if an applicant come, the Odell Pridus property, that's zone, or that was proposed as the residential only in the Marvin Heritage District. If an applicant comes, you know, they can, you know, show a site plan, it can be 40 lots, it can be 100 lots. I know that's scary. I know.
It can't. Not with transitional density, it doesn't, it doesn't add up to our land, it, it doesn't.
Well, that's what I'm, so with the density depending on that, but that's kind of the whole thing is that, one, if they approve it, it has to be consistent with our land use plan. So to your point, if it's not, you know, they have to state that and give valid reasoning on why, but that kind of does open council up to some, um, potential, you know, lawsuits slash other things. With it being consistent with the land use plan and kind of by, that's why we're taking all the information in that form base code and putting it in our land use plan. It, it's still taking all of that and that's those procedure guidelines and stuff. The conditional zoning is just making it where it's flexible slash, um, uh, it's basically allowing for that residential standard. The way this is being done is a century where if it's that development where, yeah, if somebody wants to come in and put, I don't know, I think there's like a three acre lot, like right here, if they want to come in and maybe propose like a six or eight house subdivision. It kind of does give them that flexibility, but at the same time, we have that in our land use, in the land use plan and in the specific, the intent is to be in that plan and, and the specific ordinance itself to where the legislative, legislative body at the time has to make that decision. If they're, if, if they can propose something that's completely compliant with that land use plan and, but that gives them the right to deny it because it might not be compliant based off of design standards or what they envision of what the design is. And so that's kind of the full intent of the way that this is because it does apply that, um, get that flexibility, but it also involves so much public input, um, for that legislative body to make that, that, that decision.
Okay. We'll just have to read it and see.
Yeah, so it's, as I said, it's not, it's not changing anything that's being done. It's just changing the process on how it's done. The other thing that the conditional zoning districts provide via statute is that the MSD was a question of how, how are we going to tax certain properties and, and stuff like that? I hate MSDs. I think they're, I think they're terrible if you don't have already existing infrastructure and buildings there because it's kind of pointless. It's kind of pointless to tax those people or ask those people to be taxed to do that. What you can do with conditional zoning though is put assessment fees and other, like other type of financial, um, in part of their development agreement. Uh, you know, if it's like an environmental impact fee that they have to pay per year. Um, they can do that per rezoning and essentially does the same thing as the MSD, but then it's not asking people who's not ready to develop their property or sell it or whatever to pay this additional tax. So that's kind of the other kind of intent why it's going this route.
Makes sense.
It, and the other biggest reason that we thought, or, you know, staff recommended this and council was on board is that, you know, the main commercial hub is kind of right here is, is what, what's being proposed. Um, you know, the term mixed use was thrown in there. Um, and, and in my opinion, that term mixed use was misused because the actual definition of mixed use is commercial on the bottom, resident retail, or retail on the bottom, the residential above. The intent there was kind of like mixed use as in mixing in residential within kind of commercial. You know, it, it's, I don't, that's where we kind of couldn't figure out. That's why we had to go this route because then we could, simple option was to take the residential only out of the MHD, but, um, you know, the, the incentive now of this conditional zoning is it, it really provides that flexibility here on what type of development, um, those developers want to apply for. Uh, when they have that site specific plan, every of those permitted uses that were recommended in the form base code, that's kind of their outline. That's what's kind of, they're going to go by.
Was residential over retail an option?
No.
Yeah.
But you guys hated that.
Everybody completely.
Even on the survey, I mean, there was.
The survey.
Crash that, yeah.
Now, and, but that's the thing is like, it's, it, this is, does a lot of legwork on the developer and the property owner. Um, but it does ensure that it's done like per what we're recommending in our standards. Anybody as a property owner throughout Marvin has the right to apply for a text amendment and apply for a rezoning. What this is doing is kind of narrowing what they can do within this district. But you still can't deny if somebody does want to suggest like on their site plan that they're going to have residential. But then, you know, and that, and that's for planning board then to say, hey, we're not going to recommend this. It still has to go to council and then council can, you know, just deny it. And that's kind of a, that's where, you know, council intent was, they kind of liked that concept because legally, that doesn't put them in any sort of a bind to if they deny any application because it's a floating, it's a conditional zone. It, it's not like it's a by right or stuff like that, that, um, could get you into a little bit of a bind. Um, but once again, maybe things change. I'm not saying that that's what this, that's the intent here, but if somebody has a different vision for their property compared to what was it we're doing kind of here, and this could be way down the road, it does provide that flexibility for that to at least be maybe be considered. And it's kind of, and that, that flexibility is based off of what other development happens where and when. Because if the commercial development goes here, well, one of those properties that is maybe, you know, for that civic use, you know, that's still kind of the intent or what, you know, there, I know there's two existing churches, so that's kind of, it's, that's kind of the main thing was the civic was right in here. But it's providing those property owners to look at various options for their property, but they don't have the right to do it until they're approved.
What I love about this is it seems to address, and I can be totally wrong here, but it seems to address the biggest issue I've had with what we've been doing and the reason I signed up for the Marvin Heritage District Committee as well, strategic whatever, that thing as well.
MHD SP Committee.
Thank you. Um, is that we're not developers. We're not, right, most of, I mean, I guess some of us on some of these committees are, but we're not developing these properties and I think that all of this being put on people who, for a lack of better phrase, our job is to say like, does, does this comply? Do you feel good about this sidebar, this side yard, right? Like is this reasonable, right? But it is not our, I don't think that it's within our job descriptions to be planning how all of this is going to lay out. And I love what you said, Amanda Go, Hunter, which is that it puts a lot of that weight, a lot of that heavy lift on the developers, on the landowners, right? We've been having this conversation, I think repeatedly of why, because ultimately I don't believe that that's quite frankly, your job either, right? So, um, a part of it, I mean, don't, don't get me wrong, it's our job to work with them, right? But it's not your job to figure out how they should develop their land. Like that's.
Correct.
Their job. And, and I'm hearing a little bit more of that and that's giving me better feelings about this based on the thoughts that I previously had.
Once again, everything that has been discussed prior with the form base code, the language that's in there, the design standards, the uses, all of that is still going to now be in this new, in, in this district itself. None of that's changing. All that's changing is the process of how you get to this district. But part of that, I mean, like I said, the uses are what they are and the standards are what they are. But with that conditional zoning, like I said, it's, it provides certain flexibility and part of those requirements is we want to see a site plan. We want to see that development agreement. Because one, is it compliant with those standards and stuff that we kind of approved in this plan? And once again, it can be and it can't be, but it still has to go through the process because I think a lot of great work was put into this, but who's, who's to say what could happen? And once again, somebody might have a completely different vision because of what happens in five to 10 years. But it's still.
We'll have flying cars, so we'll have to have like, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Second story.
You know, the goal, the goal of my, of my role and kind of to your point, and then the goal of why we're doing it and creating a plan that's going in our future land use plan is because we are trying to be future minded on curbing that development. But, um, it's also, yeah, it's kind of, we're putting in the guidelines and the specifics and creating that development or creating those standards and guidelines with the intent of that, but there's so much variables that can change that we kind of can't predict for.
All right. Well, we will wait to see the, uh, draft. And, uh, anyone online have any comments or questions before we review action items?
Yeah.
Yeah, they all. All right.
I have no questions.
Do we have any action items?
I yield the balance of my time.
All right, uh, any, okay, let's do board member comments. Um, how about we start? Rich, since you're still with us visually, how about you start first?
Um, yes, I'm, I'm always visual, but it's, um, no, I, I, again, I appreciate, uh, all the effort that staff has put into preparing, uh, work for us and, um, and again, just continuing to look forward and working with Kate, know what it comes.
Great. All right, Ken? Ken, K E N I.
Marino.
Ah, I'm good, thank you. Nothing, nothing for me.
All right, Kent.
Renner.
Yes, uh, nothing for me either. Apologies, I've got a cold, but I hope it's not cold.
Oh boy.
Oh my goodness.
What's the question?
All right, uh, well, we hope you're feeling better. Um, John Jones, who's hanging out in the cabin somewhere in West Jefferson.
He's frozen.
Okay.
Frozen in a cabin in West Jefferson.
All right, John, if you can hear me, just, uh.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I'm up in the mountains and it's raining. Hello.
Hello.
I am, I, I'm, you're not here for me.
Not well.
You're, you're breaking up. Feel free to put, feel free to put your, uh, comments in the chat.
We don't have a chat.
Just kidding.
Have a great night, Tom.
Yeah.
All right. Um, Bob Marklees.
Yeah, I'm with it.
Kidding.
Yeah, I was just going to say, um, I was just going to say that thank you, uh, was I trying to talk?
Thank you.
I'll let him talk.
Here me, damn.
No.
John, damn.
Go ahead, John.
We, we can't hear him here, Bob.
Okay, anyway, uh, I wanted to thank, uh.
I give up.
It's much better for us here, I'm sure than everyone else.
All right, John Jones gave up. Uh, hopefully not on life, just on the video. So Bob.
Yeah, Hunter, um, thank you for explaining the Heritage District, um, the way you did. Um, the more we talk about this and the way that we talk about this, it'll become clearer and clearer. Um, the main thing is that, uh, you know, we wanted to put this on the responsibility of the property owners while trying to develop, uh, not develop, it's the wrong word, while we want to kind of build or, you know, get this Heritage District formed. Um, and at the same time, us having control. So we're trying to do everything at once, you know? Uh, and when I say we, I'm talking about collectively, the planning board, the council, the villagers themselves, you know, what, what is it that they want? So we're, we're really straddling a lot of lines. So thank you very much for explaining it the way you did and continue to do so. So great job and thank you for the planning board.
Thank you, Bob. Michael?
No comments.
No, nothing. All right. Um, I just want to say, uh, with the, with Delta rearing its ugly head, um, everyone just please, uh, take care and, uh, feel free to not come in. So we'll just continue virtual. Um, everyone just stay safe and, uh, can I get a motion to? So Majer?
At 8:01.
Mike, give me a second. All, all in favor of adjourning?
Hi.
All right.
Eight o'clock, pretty good.
Everyone have a great, have a great evening.
Thank you, everybody.